Okay, let's go ahead and get started. We've got some stuff to get over for our meeting. And so Carter, I'm going to let you start with the legislative follow-up since you and I and Mike went down there.
Absolutely. Well, good evening. It's nice to be with you tonight. This is not meant to be a real comprehensive follow-up, but rather a little bit more in line with respect to some of the revenue outcomes, if you will, that we've been following. And as you would imagine, this would be revenue relegated to the general fund specifically, although there is implications with regard to what happened with the property tax initiatives. To start with, we are not aware whether or not the governor is going to veto the chief property tax bill that was passed out of both houses. It's still a possibility. It could happen. I believe his deadline is today. So we may be getting information one way or the other later on. But that bill that I'm talking about is referred to as 69, started in the House and went through the Senate, of course, and went through a lot of conference discussion back and forth and finally came to a conclusion that resulted in a 25% residential property tax reduction. Initially, the conversation was around 50%, if you'll recall. They conferenced, however, and concurred that 25% is a more appropriate way to go. The upshot also is that there is no backfill. So that the backfill component was never really a serious feature. And they settled on both structure and land, which was also debated as well at various points. And in fact, if it doesn't get vetoed, it would be essentially what we have to contend with when setting next year's budget. Just so you're keenly aware of what that means. For us, it means that with respect to that piece of legislation only, about $1 million worth of impact. Previously, when it was 50%, that piece of legislation would have hit us in the neighborhood of about $2 million in terms of general fund revenue loss. But with that reduction, of course, reduces the amount of impact as well. The problem is, like I had told many of you, this particular impact is not an impact that we feel and avoid. This impact is layered on top of the impact that we're receiving right now pursuant to exemptions that were passed in the last legislative session, which is roughly $1 million as well. So we're anticipating that that will hit us, you know, in two layers when we are putting the budget together for this next fiscal year, of course, which we'll present in May.
Does that, is that $1 million just directed towards our operating and stuff we talked about? Or is that also the special districts and things like that?
The $1 million that I am putting out there right now, roughly speaking, is, is general fund revenue only.
Yeah, that's all that's it. It doesn't even count the, some of our special districts.
That's right. Weed and pest is a good example. They, they will likely take a hit as well, which, as you know, helps fund a lot of our operations in parks and a lot of things that our parks employees do that are shared with that, with that fund as well. So we'll see a reduction there too, simply because it's fueled by property tax money also.
Do they help with the mosquito mitigation through weed and pest, or is that strictly city?
No, that, that is a joint effort with weed and pest district. So just to put it in perspective for you, not only do we have current year impacts that we're, you know, struggling with, we've got new impacts that will hit us in the new fiscal year from a property tax standpoint. And we also have production loss that we were notified by the assessor's office will be an impact for us as well, albeit in comparison, a much smaller piece. So that will account in and of itself for roughly $300,000 in, in revenue loss that too, we will have to reconcile some way and in some fashion with the, with the general fund.
When you say production, I don't understand that.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, what I mean is the, the value that the county receives and indirectly the city would receive in the form of mineral activity, energy activity and so forth, that is also assessed. So what we're being advised through the assessor's office is that we can anticipate about a $300,000 hit. In concert with that though, we also anticipate that there will be a 4% growth factor that in, in most cases would be revenue that would be over and above what we've planned for historically. However, that only amounts for about half of what it is that we take by way of losses through the production reduction component of this calculation. So in other words, roughly 170,000 that we would get back in the form of that 4% growth rate that is capped pursuant to previous legislation as well.
Growth rate from sales tax or gross with new, new production?
What I'm speaking of specifically, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, is, is evaluations, the assessed valuation from year to year. It is now capped at 4%. We are being advised that we will likely hit that 4% cap. But for us, it only amounts to about $170,000 a year. So the upshot is with everything that is figuring into the math that Jill's office and the assessor's office worked on historically, well, for the previous two years, the previous two budget years, meaning this current budget year and the previous budget year. We were working with a property tax figure of $6.2 million. We are anticipating a property tax figure with these impacts in place and the growth factor in place of about $4.3 million, which means that our overall impact will be in the neighborhood of $1.8 million that we'll try to reconcile through the, the budget design process. I would say that 1.8 is less than what we originally anticipated, particularly when we were talking about the 50% doctrine, when we were talking about sales tax forgiveness on electricity and the variety of other things that had essentially come and gone throughout the legislative process. 1.8 is certainly not as concerning a number, but that is an impact that we're going to have to reconcile. And $1.8 million is not a small figure to try to make up, but it is better than what I thought it would be. So it was a little bit of a good news, bad news. That is primarily what I've gotten the most questions about here as it relates to legislative session. I just spoke in passing. Initially, we were talking about sales tax forgiveness on electricity. That would have been another million dollar hit at least had it passed. That did not pass. There was a positive piece of legislation that hopefully will still find itself as a topic in the interim process wherein the distribution between the state and the city as it relates to sales tax dollars would have been favorable for cities and towns. But that failed, and so the distribution remains the same. Therefore, the, the city will not likely gain any benefit, benefit from that.
How far did that one get?
How far did that one get? It actually, let's think about that for a minute. I, I can't remember if it actually came out of a house and went to, it did, it did traverse the houses, but it failed in whichever receiving house that it, it came to. So unfortunately, it didn't make it, but it had some real positive discussion that I think will bode well, hopefully, fingers crossed, in, in the interim. One other conversation that I was going to bring up with respect to, to revenue, oh, direct investment. That bill did pass, which I, you know, personally was surprised by. That was Senate File 145, that is already signed by the governor and on its way. That is good news for cities and towns, particularly the city of Casper. However, the problem with that particular tool being available is that it very much is a long-term tool that the state started using back in 1996. And they're now receiving benefit that has proven to be very, very effective. But it, but it's, it is a long-term play. So while that's good news, I, I would not suggest that we can anticipate that that will be something we can rely on in three months when I bring you a budget.
So no, no further discussion on like YO Star 3?
I just want to remember, I want to remind everybody during our pre-meeting studio to make sure you have a signal so people can get in there to talk. So just want to make sure, clarify that.
No, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor, YO Star 3 is, is a tool that's available for cities and towns. And, and now with this tool being brought on to the, the portfolio possibilities, if you will, both big and small states and towns have options that I would suggest is commensurate with the amendment that was passed two years ago by the voters of the, of the state. And therefore should allow us to hopefully find some benefit interest strategies, interest income strategies. Unless there are other questions, Mr. Mayor, that was really all I wanted to cover tonight. Like I said, revenue centric, we will have a broader legislative follow-up, debriefing, if you will, later in the year when, when, you know, the vast variety of bills is concluded.
And you'll have better understanding after the legislature wraps up.
Right.
The impact on our full budget, be able to bring that to us after you guys start working on it.
That's right. Mr. Mayor, thank you. That brings up another quick point I'd like to add. There still is a possibility that two other bills that are related to property tax will have impacts on the city. If the, what we call the Marlowe Bill passes, it has the possibility of adding another 12% in terms of additional cuts that would be layered on top of what we've already incurred. And, and that is roughly half of what we've seen as a result of 69. So I would say that's another $500,000 that would be, need to be reconciled in the general fund if it passes. I don't know that it will come off the legislative session intact or not. The other thing that we need to be aware of too is that veterans' benefits were increased for property tax relief as well. And the assessor's office could give us no indication what that might mean on a monetary basis for the general fund. So we're still kind of waiting to see what that looks like as well. Unfortunately, that's going to take some time to try to understand.
Thanks, Carter.
Thank you.
You bet. Absolutely. Any other further questions?
Yeah, Amber. I do have a two-part question. The first part is, to your knowledge thus far, what does the interim outlay look like for other revenue specific initiatives? And the second part of the question is, do we have an interim strategy outside of whatever gets taken up on the interim to work with our Natchitoches County electeds to better understand our local municipal budget and how, you know, individual bills that they might intend to bring in the next session could impact us?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, appreciate those questions. Number one, what we have heard through the appropriations channels is that sales tax distribution is a priority. But in concert with that, discussing direct distribution is also a priority. And so, you know, for a city like Casper in Wyoming, that does not sound great because that usually means taking from the big cities and giving to the little communities when it comes to direct distribution. That, that is the path that that conversation always takes. Now, if in fact, however, that means that that is sort of a casualty of a much more favorable distribution scheme on the sales tax side with the state, then, you know, all the cities and towns have a, a possibility of being benefited in the net. And so that, to me, has some potential, but it also has some downside as well. That will be interim discussion, however. And again, you know, we're going to have to really be active in the budget discussion next session so that we can be sure we're at the table when those critical conversations take place. Now, as it relates to the second part of your question, yes. I've been visiting with, with WAM, I've been visiting with individual legislators as well to try to have a hand in providing some educational opportunity on an individual basis, on a very strategic basis as it relates to where some of our legislators are serving right now. And, and hopefully be able to affect some delivery of good information and reliable data that we have at our, at our fingertips. So with a willing audience, we will be right there to try to provide some good, good insight, good information. And that's our goal.
Don't want to stifle any more questions. We've only got about seven minutes or so. We've got a couple more items. Old landfill remedy.
Yes, we are in the process of working with the DEQ to implement a remedy for the old landfill. We've been working on this for some time. We have had some scope changes as well, some quote changes that we want to apprise you of. And just to give you a little bit of the punchline ahead of time, the state is willing to fund this project 85% and our match, of course, will be 15. And that's out of bail fill. That's not a general fund implication. So with that table setting, if I could turn the time over to Tom, that'd be great.
Mayor, Counselors, also with me tonight from the Engineering Department, Alex Fada, and Stephen Stolpe. Stephen's been kind of the lead engineer on all the things that, a landfill and really is our resident expert out there. And so this is the old bail fill remediation. So when you're driving down Metro Road, it's to the right or to the south, towards McKenzie Pond. Originally, it involved installing some ditches. And then as we got into the design of the project, realized we needed to replace the storm sewer that also dealt with some leachate that could be conveyed via surface. And again, through Cindy and Stephen negotiating Feverish Shaliva DQ, got them to pay for 100% of the remediation and 75% of the storm sewer. So in one picture, that's, that's worth putting in 15%. They're paying for 85%. I kind of dropped the ball. This was supposed to be included in Budget Amendment Number Two. We didn't have the final number. And again, we did not get all of our documentation done and get it in Budget Amendment Number Two. So what we're asking for tonight is permission from council to give us the authority to go ahead with this project. We've bid the project for Amsoor construction, was the low bidder at $643,000, which was 11,000 over our estimate or just a little bit under 2% over our estimate. And then we want to put a 10% contingency in there. And so the total amount is going to be $417,000 in round numbers. And ultimately, we want permission from council tonight. It's on your agenda tonight if you give us the approval here to approve the award of that contract to Ramsoor Construction to complete that bail fill remedy. And again, 85% is coming from Ramsoor. And again, 85% is coming from Ramsoor. And when we do Budget Amendment Number Three, we will clean up the books, so to speak, and fully fund that project. So with that, I'd be glad to address any procedural questions. And I have two very adept engineers to back me up with any technical questions.
Any questions for Tom or his crack team of engineers? Maybe that's not the best word. You know what I mean, gentlemen? Nothing? Okay. Great. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
One of the other...
Didn't mean anything from us. That's just information.
No, that's right. You'll see that as Tom mentioned in Amendment Three.
Perfect. Stone Ridge.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, we've been working on a proposal of this nature for, you know, some time, not anything we've had the chance to talk to you about before. But we have a piece of land adjacent to the, you know, some homeowners in the Stone Ridge development that the city has had for a long time. We really have not done anything with, probably received it as a result of a dedication for city use pursuant to the development there. A number of neighbors have inquired over the years whether or not this would be property that we would dispose of into the hands of the public sector, private sector, excuse me, and more specifically with regard to neighbors who may have an interest in wanting to expand their own properties with the right proposal. Piece of property that we're talking about here is on the bottom corner right of this exhibit. This piece right here, all city property. We would like to transition that to, as I mentioned, the private sector, likely for use in the residential area there. We can't just give it away, however, as you know. And we're hopeful that you will be comfortable with us going through an RFP process that will enable us to dispose of the property into the hands of potentially the neighbors or others who would like to see it developed. Any questions?
Any questions for Carter on Stone Ridge?
In case you were worried, Zulima is here to back me up with much more detailed information.
How did he do, Zulima? How did he do? Good? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any agenda review items that you might...
I really don't have anything. So I'd be open for any questions.
Any questions about the agenda anybody might have, thoughts, concerns? Okay. All righty, let's head on out there. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Carter.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, staff, for coming.